Good evening, everyone. Hi. I want to call to order the meeting for the City Council of the City of Pacifica for October 13th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember DeGree.
Present.
Mayor Protem Irvin.
Here.
Mayor Nyheart.
Present. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have a closed session report? No reportable action, thank you very much. That brings us to the consent calendar. These for all of us who are joining us tonight, all of you who are joining us tonight, the consent calendar. You can speak on those items, but I do need to ask for cards now if there's any one that wants any polled. Okay, seeing none. What's the pleasure of the council? Comments, questions, issues? Councilmember Stone.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
Okay. All in, well, please vote. Motion is second. And that passes five to nothing. And I really appreciate two things I just want to draw your attention to. The Code of Ethics was renewed and also the resolution and proclamation about bullying in the workplace, and I really appreciate both of those coming forward. With that, we're going to move on to special presentations, and we have a number of those. And most important, we want to hear our annual library report. So I'm going to ask Julie Finklang, our new librarian, to come, our new, you have a different title, what is it? Headlight manager, okay, to give us that report. And welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Nyheart, honorable councilmembers, Ms. Tinfo and Ms. O'Connell. I am here this evening to give a brief presentation of the San Mateo County Library's annual report for fiscal year 2013-14, which you will find in the packets just distributed. But first, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Julie Finklang, and I was fortunate enough to become the manager of the Pacifica Libraries in July of this year. This was a happy reunion for me as I began my library career as an aide at the Santos Library in 2003. I am thrilled to return to this wonderful community and continue the journey towards one new library for all Pacificans. First, I would like to speak about the accomplishments of the San Mateo County Library System this fiscal year. As shown in the 2014 annual report in your packets, the San Mateo County Library has ranked 12th nationwide and 2nd in California among public libraries with similar budgets. We are extremely proud of this outstanding achievement. 2014 marks the culmination of our most recent seven-year strategic plan. I am pleased to report that SMCL has either met or exceeded all objectives outlined in the 2007 to 2014 strategic plan. The annual report discusses these objectives in more detail. The library is now beginning to develop our next strategic plan, which will cover the years 2015 through 2020. As a first step, EMC Research Corporation of Oakland was hired to develop a data and demographic initiative report. Key findings from this report include: SMCL receives very strong positive ratings from both residents and patrons. On almost every activity, SMCL is performing as well as or better than the level of importance that patrons place on the activity. Most residents in the SMCL service area say they do have a library card. Many visit the library frequently, especially to check out books. Reported website usage is high and is used to search the library catalog, renew items, check library accounts, and place holds. Checking out books and having a diverse set of books is the most important library activity, followed closely by allowing free Internet access and supplying computers and Wi-Fi. While use is still relatively low, patrons are placing a high level of importance on Internet access and downloadable media. The full text of this report is available on our website, smcl.org. Next, I would like to mention some highlights from the last fiscal year at the Pacifica Libraries. Demand for our libraries, programs, and services continues to be strong. We circulated close to 300,000 items, experienced over 176,000 patron visits, answered nearly 24,000 questions, and presented storytimes and programs that drew close to 22,000 people to the libraries. The San Mateo County Library's new summer learning program, developed in response to the fact that 42% of our county's children are not reading at grade level by the 3rd grade, in conjunction with the Big Lift County Initiative and funded by Measure A grant funds, was a huge hit here in Pacifica. Over 2,200 of Pacifica's children participated in the summer learning program, and each and every participant received a free book. In August, we held a summer extravaganza party that featured performers, a petting zoo, the Imagination Playground, face painting, airbrush tattoos, and many other fun activities. The extravaganza was attended by an unprecedented 350 people and was an enormous success that we will surely be repeating in years to come. The summer learning program finished with a $1,000 scholarship being awarded to 5-year-old Pacifican, Corinne Wheat. Councilmember Mike O'Neil will present Corinne with her scholarship at our Tricycle Musical Fest on October 25th. The Tricycle Musical Fest program was such a huge hit last year that we are repeating it this year on October 25th. We will be raffling off a radio flyer tricycle and hoping that children will wear their Halloween costumes to our Halloween dance party with the pop-ups, a modern puppet rock band. We are also going to be repeating another very popular program this year, Dia de los Muertos, or Day of the Dead, on November 1st. We will be having stories, crafts, including sugar skull decorating, food in a mariachi band. We are seeking volunteers to assist with this. I'd also like to invite you to stop by the Sharp Park Library to view our Ofrenda, which is an altar set up to remember and honor our ancestors. Many members of our staff, including myself, as well as the community, have contributed pictures to our Ofrenda. On a less positive note, unfortunately, we will have to reduce our open hours from 74 weekly open hours to 60. As you probably know, the San Mateo County Library's Joint Powers Authority funds 60 open hours per week for each library jurisdiction. We are very grateful to the City of Pacifica for funding the additional 14 weekly open hours and understand that it is no longer economically feasible for the city to continue doing so. We have conducted a thorough analysis of library usage patterns as well as a survey of Pacifica citizens, which received 701 responses. We expect to be making a decision about our new hours this week and will most likely be implementing the new schedule in the new year. Finally, our journey towards a new library for all Pacificans continues. Our efforts are currently focused on two issues. The first is a structural analysis that was commissioned by the city with the architectural firm Group 4. We will be reviewing the completed report with Group 4 tomorrow. Preliminary results indicate that our existing library facilities are failing to meet the needs of the community, which is not a surprise. The second issue is site control. In order to build the new library at the currently preferred Beach Boulevard location, we must have the approval of the Coastal Commission. We are hoping to receive this approval at the next meeting of the Coastal Commission, which is currently scheduled for November 12, 13, and 14 at the Ocean Inn Hotel in Half Moon Bay. The agenda for the Coastal Commission meetings are typically not released until three business days before the meeting, so at this time, we are waiting for that to occur. I'd like to thank you for your ongoing support of library operations in this community and be glad, and I am glad to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Stone.
Hi there. Thank you for the report, and I do have a quick question about our facilities, and I know that they are substandard in a lot of ways. And one of the things I thought I read that was striking was that there's a lot of programming that the county puts on that's available, but we don't have the facilities to take advantage of those programs. Could you elaborate on that?
Well, in fact, one thing I would like to share with you, which was brought to my mind by the presence of our esteemed veterans in the audience, is that I recently procured a grant for the San Mateo County Library for the establishment of a Veterans Resource Center for the library, which is something that is very much needed in the community for the purpose of helping veterans to find the benefits and services they're eligible for. And I was, I became interested in this because I had personal experience with this issue when I was caring for my father during the last years of his life, and he was a Korean War veteran. So we are moving forward with this, but unfortunately, we won't be able to locate that Veterans Resource Center in a Pacifica library at this time because we don't have the space. So we're having to look at our larger facilities.
Thank you for sharing that, and I know there's a number of things that are like that, and that's a good example, I think, for people that, one of the reasons why we need upgraded facilities, because there's so many great programs out there that we could take advantage of that are, I hate to say free, but they're included in what is available if we just had that facility. So, thank you, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thanks very much for the wonderful presentation. One of the questions I had was regarding new ways that the library is currently being used now that we're in the digital age. I always think it's important to point to how differently the library is looked at now, and I was wondering if you can address that a little bit.
We have many new digital collections available just in the past year or two, in addition to our eBooks and our e-Audiobooks, which we've had for a few years now. We've also added free digital music, which enables every library patron to download up to five songs per week for their personal enjoyment. We've also added digital magazine collection, which people can read magazines on their devices, and most recently, we have just started adding movies, streaming video.
Oh, that's great. And so now, and when people go into a library, they have a lot of computers there, things like that, that people are accessing the Internet, and it's more of a hub.
That's correct. And we're also going to start circulating NOX, which are e-reader devices that will come preloaded with various books. So we'll have some that would be, for example, loaded with romance books, others with mysteries, others with popular bestsellers, so that people can choose according to their reading preferences, what they'd like to check out.
And I was just going to ask you, you were saying that you're going to be determining the new hours of the library based on the fact that we need to reduce the library hours, and I was wondering if you can talk about how those new hours are going to be, how you're going to figure out.
Well, what we've done is we've looked at our usage patterns. We have quite a lot of data and statistics available based on, you know, how many patrons walk in the door every day, how many items are checked out, how many holds are received and processed. And we also did do a survey through Survey Monkey, which is a very good survey, surveying tool that analyzes the data for you. And I'm going to be meeting with library administration on Wednesday morning of this week to go over those results and look at possible scenarios, trying to meet, still continue to meet as many needs of the community as possible, even with the reduced hours. And of course, our ultimate goal is to have one library when we would then be able to have a seven-day schedule because we would only be running one facility instead of two.
Excellent, great information. Thank you.
Councilmember DeGree.
The Veterans Resource Center, sounds like a great, great idea, thank you about that. Want to thank all those staff and volunteers all the years of Pacifica Library. The community obviously respects and enjoys the libraries, so really thank all of you and the community volunteers for all the years of doing this, and I think brighter years are coming.
Thank you, and I've been very fortunate to have inherited an amazing self, highly self-motivated staff.
Councilmember O'Neil.
I just want to say I'm the representative for Pacifica and the JPA, and it is amazing once you get into what the libraries are offering, and especially if you go see what other towns on the peninsula have built for their single library, as well as the programs that are offered in a lot of libraries. I mean, I guess the Veterans Resource Center is going to have to go elsewhere. I know I saw a teen center where all the teens, I mean, if anybody's raised a family in Pacifica, you know there's not a lot of places for a teen to go and kind of be a teen with their peers. And there was a teen center I had a chance to look at, and it was, they were going to have to expand it, it was so heavily used. And I mean, I think that's one of the core things. I mean, the biggest users, if I remember correctly, are the seniors and the youngest.
Families with children, yes.
Yes, the moms with kids and stuff. And then during the recession, there was, this was also the only place where a lot of people who could no longer afford Internet was able to go and fill out job applications, since even McDonald's now is by the Internet. So I think at some point, you got to look at the libraries almost becoming the third place, the community center, it's kind of becoming, you know, Pacifica's living room where they can take and do a lot of the social safety net stuff that needs to be done that the Resource Center doesn't quite take care of, but people need to know that it's available. So I just wanted to say thank you for all the work you do do at the library.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I get to finish.
Okay.
And just say, first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
Tom was in the community for a long time, but you certainly know that, and you carry on that tradition, so we're thrilled to have you.
And we're very fortunate that Tom is still employed by the San Mateo County Library, so I rely on him quite heavily for background and historical information.
It's good to have that reference. And the other thing I wanted to also, two things, is to thank all the volunteers that really make, make so much out of the library resources that we do have. Without their help, I'm sure we couldn't do as well. But the last thing I wanted to piggyback on what Mayor Protem brought up, and that is really the issue that libraries have changed, and once you have an interaction with a really good informatics-oriented librarian, you begin to realize that there's a whole new world we have to navigate, and the library is the place to go to get some of the information. There's way more sophisticated search engines available to you than just Google, and it's hard to really believe that because, and even then, when you go and talk to the librarian and find out how do you sort fact from fiction, misinformation, et cetera, what kinds of sites, how do you judge a site, I was really pleased when I walked into the Sharp Park Library and found the same level of sophistication with that as I even found at UCSF. So I am very, very impressed with the services that we get in San Mateo County, and I want to thank you for continuing those.
Thank you, and thank you for welcoming me.
Okay. Thank you. Great annual report. And with that, we have two special presentations that are proclamations tonight, both celebrating anniversaries. One is the 50th, and the other is the 25th, and I'm going to do the 25th first, just because it's the order of the agenda. But do we have folks here from Sound Waves and Sound Waves Christmas? Dennis is back there, Dennis Willis. Could you come up to the podium, Dennis?
Have children with him?
You can bring the whole crowd if you want. They just want to stay by, oh, okay, shy. All right. Well, this is in celebration of the 25th Annual Sound Waves Christmas. And Dennis, it's a real pleasure to share this proclamation with you. Sound Waves Christmas is an annual music-based variety fundraiser that encourages viewers to contribute to local nonprofits and charities. And whereas Sound Waves Christmas is a spinoff of a long-running Bay Area music program, Sound Waves, which ran for 25 years, and the holiday edition was taken on a life of its own, generating and redistributing nearly 40,000 food, clothing, and toy donations over the past 25 years. Whereas hosted and produced by yourself, Dennis Willis, and Stephen Kurt, since 1990, the program has won several regional awards for excellence in broadcasting. Whereas Sound Waves Christmas is produced with the Northern, with support of Pacifica Coast Television and airs on multiple stations all over Northern California and globally online. Whereas the show was adapted with changes in technology, the economy, and the ever-shifting needs of the community, this year's program will benefit the Pacifica Resource Center and multiple charities around the Bay Area, including Toys for Tots, Old School Cafe, and Home First. Now, therefore, I, Mary Ann Nyheart, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby urge our citizens to support the 25th Annual Sound Waves and congratulate you on 25 years. Thank you very much, Dennis.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This is an absolutely wonderful moment for us because of, we've done it for 25 years, and as you said, it's been evolving and changing, and you're always trying to figure out the best way to help folks, but we have a tremendous crew, we have such a great group of volunteers, and it really is an honor. And we go out all over the place, but we are first and foremost a Pacifica show and always will be, and this means so much to all of us, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Don't run off. It airs which night?
We're shooting this weekend at the Terranova Theater, so please come out. It's a live show, it's a live concert. It's going to air after Thanksgiving. We need a little time to put this one together, but it's our, it's our move to a big stage, and we're very, very excited and moderately terrified about it, but it's going to be, it's going to be a blast, it's going to be a lot of fun.
Wonderful. Okay, so I have, don't go away. Everybody gets to talk. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mayor Nyheart. I can't believe we've been doing this for 25 years. I grew up here on the coast, and so I've seen this over the years, and I didn't know it was, I knew it was longer than I can remember, because I remember being pretty young seeing this, but seeing 25 years is amazing, so.
I had hair when we started.
Well, congratulations, and, you know, you've done a lot of good in that time, and I think everyone really appreciates it, and I know we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Mayor Protem?
Again, I just want to say thank you so much for all that you're doing. You're providing incredible entertainment for such a great cause, and I can't believe it was 25 years ago that it started, because I remember that very well, and just very impressed with all the good that you bring to our community. So thank you so much, and I'll be sure to tune in. Thank you.
And get people to show up on Saturday.
Right, definitely.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And Councilmember DeGree.
Yes, thank you. I'm not surprised, I don't think you're going to need much urging to get there, because you're definitely the heart of the community, but could you tell us for sure, it's at Terranova?
Terranova Theater.
At 7:00 PM, was it?
No, no, 2:30 in the afternoon.
Oh, 2:30, thank you.
Yeah, so, there's a lot of other events happening that day. When we picked that date, we didn't realize that, but we're right in the afternoon, so as I'm telling people, you have, come out and see a live show, and then you can go and do something else at night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And Councilmember O'Neil.
I just wanted to say, I've chatted with Dennis down there at Channel 26 many, or should be Pacific Coast TV.
Yes.
Many, many times, and now that he has the opportunities, expanding it to Half Moon Bay and the entire coast side. And I'm sure Dennis won't mind that I mentioned that there is the PCT Telethon on the weekend before Thanksgiving, and that you should really look at it, because you can get some really good deals on local merchants as well as supporting the Christmas, right?
You're going to be hosting again this year, right?
Well, yeah, I'll be there as an auctioneer, yes.
Excellent, good.
And I'll just add my congratulations, and it's a real privilege to be able to present this to you.
Ah, thank you. Thank you very much.
And, do you want a picture?
Well, sure.
Well, okay, why don't you come up here? Just one outside sound.
So I go there? Cool.
Wait, 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 I want to turn this around. Well, bring the family, and get the presents. Dennis, here's a picture, and we come down there, we're going to write, come down there a couple times, and we got to save them for the American Legion. All right, come on, screw it in.
One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, very good. All right. And since we're in the world of anniversaries, we have a very, very special anniversary to me. Commander, could I have you come to the podium? You can bring the whole post with you. It's a good thing.
The ones that are here.
The ones that are here. This is a very special anniversary, because the American Legion Pacifica Post 238 is celebrating their 50th. And it breaks my heart that I'm not only going to miss Sound Waves, but I'm going to miss this, but I got to go, so I'll be in Indianapolis, I'm so sorry. But Mayor Protem's going to be there.
Thank you.
The American Legion was chartered by Congress in 1919 on September 16th as wartime veterans organization based on the four pillars of Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth. And whereas the members of Pacifica Legion Post 238 celebrates its 50th anniversary on Sunday, October 19th, 2014, and over the years, the American Legion has become a preeminent community service organization, which now numbers more than 2.5 million members, men and women, in over 14,000 American Legion posts worldwide, working a variety of programs that support the four pillars and benefit our nation's veterans, its service members, their families, and the youth of America and its citizens. And whereas the members of the American Legion are dedicated to upholding the ideals of freedom and democracy, while working to make a difference in the lives of fellow Americans. And whereas in Pacifica, the members of our post and auxiliary are heavily involved with local community activities, ranging from hospital services at VA Palo Alto, the Polytrauma Center, to blood drives, to youth programs such as Boy Scouts, American Legion Baseball, scholarships, and the annual American Legion Boy State, Boys Nation Program. And whereas we actively support our deployed servicemen and women by sending care packages to our deployed military members. As more veterans return home from the war on terror, some will need our immediate help, while others will need help down the road. Membership in the Legion helps strengthen our fight for better active-duty pay, improved housing for active-duty families, and helps ensure that the VA's medical system can properly care for the sick and wounded returning from Iraq and Afghanistan. And now, therefore, I, Mary Ann Nyheart, Mayor, the City of Pacifica, do hereby congratulate the American Legion Pacifica Post 238 on the occasion of their 50th anniversary, and honor all members who volunteer their valuable time, talents, and resources in an effort to help others. Thank you so very much, and congratulations. And may I publicly say just one more thing? Thank you for your service.
We thank you, we thank all the members of the City Council and all you people out here. We really appreciate all your enthusiasm for what we've done. We did it for ourselves, we did it for you. Regular people like the rest of you. I do want to invite everybody that's here, everybody in the city. We're having our 50th anniversary celebration at the Hall Sunday from 12 until 6. Everybody's invited. We have a buffet lunch or breakfast, afternoon brunch, I guess it is. Anyway, everybody's invited. Thank you.
Commander, not to interrupt, but I want to make sure, just a second, I want to make sure that they all heard that, because when you turn away from the microphone, they can see you on TV, the audience can.
Everybody is invited from 12 until 6 on Sunday at the Hall. We have a brunch and no host bar. Flint.
Evening.[601.12][601.12](APPLAUSE).
And past commander, Vern Alonso.[607.79][607.79](APPLAUSE). My name is Charles Swanson.
There we go.[615.12][615.12](APPLAUSE). Okay, now, everybody's going to say something again. So, I'm going to start with the other end this time. Councilmember O'Neal.
First of all, I'd just like to say is that the American Legion really is a part of this community. I know they've let a lot of nonprofits use their facilities. I've been a judge several times for their speech contest, and we actually had one of the, a girl from Terranova go all the way up to the Nationals, if I remember right, a couple, two or three years ago. And that was like a $20-something thousand scholarship for that young lady. So, they do a lot of good, and what's really, I think, heartwarming is the fact, I've gone down there several times now for the monthly food distribution for the Pacifica Resource Center. And even though all these guys did serve our country in the military, some of them are there serving us today by helping those that need this food from the Resource Center. So, I also want to say thank you for letting them use the facility, and thank you for those that get there and move those boxes of vegetables and milk and everything else. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeGree.
And as a military mom, I'm really grateful that you're there and that you've hung in there. Certainly, thank you for your own services. It's very helpful to be able to go and to listen to you folks and your experiences and that you're doing so much for our sons and daughters, husbands and wives. Really appreciate that, and that you're making a special effort to reach out to our returning veterans. I know that's not easy to do. It's a puzzle to me, but it's also a pleasure that I know I get a lot out of. I think if they could actually get in there and share their memories with you, it would be very helpful. So, thank you for being there. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Again, I just really want to thank you for your service, and thank you for being there to help those that have served us in such amazing ways and so selflessly sacrificed so much of their lives for the benefit of all Americans. It's huge what you do, and I think we continually have to strive for better care for our veterans and the community at large, and what you do is irreplaceable, and I'm very grateful to all of you.
Thank you. It's something we try and keep on doing.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Stone.
Thank you. So, when I was little, probably say five to 10, my grandfather, who was a World War II veteran, used to pick me up, and I really wanted to go play baseball. He loved baseball, but he'd always take me before to go and volunteer at the Legion. Before, he said, "Before we're going to go play baseball, we're going to do this." And when I was a kid, I was, "Oh, man." But that lesson that he taught us to do that was just, it really stuck with me a lot. And the Legion meant a lot to him, returning from World War II. Also, my brother was deployed in Afghanistan, and I just want to thank you for everything you do for the community, that you've continued to serve our country and our communities. It's really invaluable to a lot of people, and all the services that you provide also in volunteering for our returning veterans is just amazing and very heartwarming, and I really thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We try and take care of our service members and our community. Our community is very important to us also, you know, all of you. Everybody out there is important to us also. You know, that's what we try and do. Part of our pillars of what we do as the American Legion. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to just add my thanks again, and to say that not only the speech contest, I mean, Rudy Pacal has done a wonderful job, and Alan, and all the folks that work on so many projects there. I'm just so impressed. And I just can't say enough about reaching out to our younger veterans and making a community. I know there's a bit of a divide, and we too at the VA are trying to bridge that divide because so many differences, like we were talking about before. You used to have a ship, and you'd have time to re-acclimate when you came home. And now, you leave Afghanistan, and you're in your living room the next day, and how does one adjust? And some of our challenges are reaching out and drawing in people who are in trouble, and I know that you're involved in that as well. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, enough, but I just think that that particular celebration is incredibly important in many, many ways, especially with some of the things that we're facing today. We have no public hearings tonight, so that brings us to council communications. I'm going to say while council is organizing themselves that council communications is an opportunity to share things with each other in public that we can't do otherwise, and things that are not on the agenda. And in addition, there is an opportunity for oral communications, for you all to speak on a topic that is important to the business of the city but isn't on our agenda anywhere. And there are yellow cards in the back of the room. If you would just put your name and the topic, and if you want to be in oral communications on it, then I get those cards and call you up. But right now, we're doing council communications. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mayor Nyheart. So, I just have three committee meetings that are coming up, and I don't know if the weather's just been too good or what, but two of them have been canceled or pushed back, so I'll be reporting on those. Bicycle meeting was pushed back till, actually, it's the last one of the year, so that'll be my last one as chair of that meeting, or that group. And then, Library Foundation was going to have a liaison committee meeting tomorrow, which is going to be pushed back. And then, but we do have Economic Development tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM at the police station, if anyone's interested. You can find the agenda on the city website. Thanks.
Mayor Protem?
Let's see. I attended a summit given by Skyline College, the Skyline Summit, and it was very interesting. The idea behind it is trying to get a lot of stakeholders together so we can discuss issues that are very important to our city. And one of the things that they do in this meeting is they get together and try to come up with action items, things that's been determined by the stakeholders that are incredibly important to our communities, and how we can make those things happen. And it was an excellent forum, talked about hidden gems and ways to bring everybody together. And it was very interesting. One of the issues that kept coming up is the fact that in order to engage our community, they need to be informed, of course, and they need to be educated, and that's just a returning theme often, and I think it's something that we all strive to improve upon and work together to make sure everybody is informed, and I'm very happy to be part of such a forum to make sure that everybody is engaged with our community, because there's so much that we can do together. So, I really appreciate both Pacifica residents, Greg Cochran and Cindy Abbott, who are very central in putting together the Skyline Summit, and it was a wonderful event to be part of. And I'd also like to thank our city manager, Lori Tinfo, who participated in a roundtable discussion with a variety of other city managers, and we talked about innovative ideas and ways of moving our cities forward, which was also very interesting and informational as well. So, I appreciate that. I also attended a beautification committee meeting with Mayor Nyheart, and just wanted to let everybody know that the Mayor's Pride Awards is up and going right now, and this is just a way to improve curb appeal around Pacifica. And the deadline for getting in your applications is October 15th, which is in two days. So, if you have a project you've been working on in your house and you'd like to show it off to the rest of our community, please get those applications in. It should be really exciting. We're also talking about a couple other issues in the beautification committee, including Adopt a Highway that's being spearheaded by Mr. Michael Mooney, who's really pushing hard to make sure that our highways are beautiful, and we're doing everything we can to improve our community in that way. And in addition, we're working with many community groups and schools in order to get them going on different beautification projects. So, it's very exciting to be part of that committee. I also attended the Council of Cities Dinner that was hosted by Pacifica, and Mayor Nyheart, along with our Chief Tassa, were central. We talked about mental health issues in our county and our cities, and it was incredibly informative in how we can all work together to improve our treatment and how we approach this issue. And it was very helpful and informative to hear, and I'm sure Mayor Nyheart will expound on that issue as well. And of course, I think we all attended the Fog Fest, a great event, great fun, entertainment, and bringing the community together. So, I'd really like to thank everybody that was involved in bringing us the Fog Fest, including our city staff, as well as the many, many volunteers that volunteered probably hundreds of hours bringing that to the City of Pacifica and allowing us to shine. So, I appreciate that as well. And then, also, I attended the Oktoberfest that the Chamber put on on Saturday, a great, great, fun event for a great cause. So, I encourage next year, y'all to join me on that. And that's about it.
Councilwoman DeGree.
Right. That same day of the summit, I tried to do two things. I did have an opportunity to talk to Anne Leclerc, who's head of the San Mateo Silicon Valley Visitors Bureau, and she was all excited about presenting Pacifica as a great visitor place. So, I'm sorry I missed the whole thing in that in particular. So, I was attending the Supervisor Pine Working Group for Sea Level Rising, and I was very happy to see North County Water Department and one of our wastewater treatment plant employees, Joshua Cosgrove, there. So, the two of us are on a committee to make sure that specifics regarding Pacifica will be researched, and we can learn more about the specifics of sea level rising here. Reiterate, for those of you, we love to have the public come. At the Economic Development Committee, we'll be meeting, as was mentioned, tomorrow at 6:00 in the Police Department Conference Room. And on Wednesday, open space, and GGNRA Parkland Committee meets at 6:30 in the Planning Department Conference Room, or the PBNR, actually it is, right over here in Francisco. So, my number four. This week, there is a conference and Santa Clara Convention of Intelligent Transportation Systems, and I encourage anybody that can to tune in on that. Elections are coming up, and I really appreciate the public getting out there, listening to all the candidates, and encourage people to register to vote if they have not done so. A vote is very important, and with veterans sitting here, we know that freedom isn't free. We've had the library on focus tonight as well. All these things keep us free, and the ability to vote is such a precious gift. So, people can still register by October 20th. Those of you who have special needs children, Parca is having a speaker, an attorney. We don't always have that ability to get attorneys on conservatorships, and that'll be on next Tuesday, the 21st, in South San Francisco at the Community Center there at And there is a candidates forum on Saturday at 9:30 at Sharp Parks. So, thank you all for being involved.
Thank you. And Councilmember O'Neal.
I attended the congestion management meeting, which, you know, I'm part of online committee, and there was quite a presentation on different methods and how about going energy, solar, and electric savings. And there was a real interesting thing that they're going to start up. I don't know if it's quite ready for public yet, but it's going to be basically you put in your house, you put in your address, and up will come up all the solar vendors so you can see how much it would cost, your savings, et cetera. So, I thought that was kind of interesting. So, basically, a one-stop shop for solar. I also attended the Senior Spaghetti Dinner, and Jim Lang, the Senior Services Director, makes a really, really good spaghetti sauce. I mean, he uses sausage instead of ground beef, so it was really good. Then, I also was at the Success Summit, Oktoberfest, and at the Council of Cities. So, what's interesting at the Success Summit is they passed out this thing, 101 Things to Do in San Mateo County. And what's interesting, Pacifica must have had at least 15 to 20 items on there with the different things and stuff. And I saw we were featured, actually, in the Chronicle as having, I think it was three of the 20 best hikes in the Bay Area. So, I thought that was kind of cool.
Very good. Mayor Protem already mentioned the beautification, the Pride Awards. The Mayor's Pride Awards are kind of an effort to roll out more curb appeal and to clean up yards and continue our beautification efforts. You've seen some of the sites improve around town. This is another way to extend it into our residences. It's taken an active movement in my own community, my own neighborhood, and we've had quite a number of applicants. So, the final, just fill out the form. You can download it online. The final applications are the 15th. Just take some pictures, send them in electronic. Be great. We're looking forward to celebrating that in November. We'll be giving out those awards, and we'll have pictures on our city website in kind of a slideshow of those. I also want to remind people, SAM Trans Hearing is October 16th. That's this Thursday night. And SAM Trans is of vital importance to our community as they discuss rerouting or routes. I would like to make sure, I hope it's in the paper and they announced it. I don't know, but I want to make sure that people are aware. 6:00 PM Community Center this Thursday night. I know that we've had a considerable uptick in ridership since we have the flexible routing, but I really want to make sure that people are getting the routes, because our only real public form of transportation is SAM Trans in our community. Thank you for mentioning the mental health issues and the fact that we talked about them. We've had a number of cities now come forward. I think Stephen Kaplan, who's the Director of Behavioral Health Services and Recovery Services for San Mateo County, is probably going to rue the day he started talking about services in our town, because we're certainly getting more cities engaged. And I just wanted to say that I am thrilled, because very shortly, they will be doing kind of a beta test, if you will, or a pilot of a support team as soon as they can hire the psychologist that will be on that team. This will be a support team for police in our communities who are engaged with individuals who are having or responding to individuals who are having some mental health challenges. And I am very, very pleased to actually say that our Chief of Police, Jim Tassa, has been very involved in spreading the word and engaging others in that effort. been very involved in spreading the word and engaging others in that effort. So I can thank you very much from the bottom of my heart for taking that on. I also wanted to say that the deputy city manager, or county manager, also shared with me that there will be a veterans assessment very soon of needs, and needs not just in terms of mental health, but behavioral health, but also in terms of housing and other kinds of things in our county. And I'll give you more information on that as those dates come forward. I wanted to share with everyone on the council some information that I received as part of CCG, City and County Association of Governments. And I was talking to our Executive Director particularly about climate action plans because those were one of the items on our recent agenda. And we were seventh in our county out of 20 cities to adopt our climate action plan. Our action plan is actually considered to be one of the more aggressive plans in the county at this point in time, although with 13 more to go, it, you know, remains to be up in the air. But I did wanted to add a couple of things that I have been investigating solar, and solar and electric vehicles will be a major part of reducing emissions to meet the state mandates to reduce emissions, but also to exceed those in terms of our own interests. And solar, I've discovered that, I talked to a number of different solar companies about this. We put in our action plan a reduction of admissions of about 23 megatons due to solar, and that's what our projection was. We've already maxed 841 megatons. So that is a pretty interesting little detail. And the estimates go much higher. It's controversial as to how much we can reduce admissions, but we would love to continue to do that and support it. And there will be some promotional programs that CCG is sponsoring. The Congestion Management Resource Group is actually part of one of our committees, so we'll be bringing that forward. Along those same lines, we've had two sets of awards come forward for the county, and we're really excited about those. One award was for the 21 Elements Housing Plan, and the other award, and we received that as a state award, and the other award, what is for our teens awareness and trash pickup. And they have a mobile app that's very cool. You should go on our website and look at those things. But the mobile app is actually a game that gets you to engage as a teen in activities related to trash and what's bad. And it's all about awareness and starting those things early. So I really encourage people to become more knowledgeable about that. We continue to work on our own priority conservation area designation, and we will be moving forward with that. I hope it'll come to council soon. We do have a rain barrel recapture system that there are $50 rebates for each one of those rain barrel recaptures. And I'm talking about this tonight because I'm hopeful, I'm very hopeful that we will have some rain in the not-too-distant future. I might jinx it by mentioning it. And the last item I wanted to mention, and I asked Dennis to stay around because he will share with others, but I wanted to share with council that I have received notes and emails from the Association of Bay Area Governments, from the Transportation Authority, from the City and County Association of Governments, and from many cities like South San Francisco, who have all in the past month adjourned their meetings in the honor of our former mayor and council member, Jim Vreeland. And each has sent letters to Lori and the boys in recognition of all the service and the things that he has done. So I just wanted to share that with everyone. In addition, the Board of Supervisors adjourned their meeting and did the same thing. So condolences continue to come in, and we should let people know. Okay. And I do know Lori hasn't given us permission to release it, but Dennis was a vital part in making a really incredible video of the service. If it becomes available, we'll make sure that other people can see it. But thank you. Okay. With that, anything else from council? Seeing no one, that brings us to oral communications. And it's my job to remind you of a couple of things real quickly. First of all, we have some new people in the audience that want to speak. There are lights up there. You're given three minutes. The green light is a go. You get two minutes there. The yellow light comes on. You still have a minute. Don't stop until you see the red light, and then I have to cut you off. So three minutes is the maximum. This portion of the agenda is for public to address the city council on any issue that's not on the agenda. You see what I'm reading is in the program. It's in the agenda. So it's nothing new. I just want to remind you of all of it. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications by virtue of those yellow cards that you filled out, provided, however, that during oral communications portion of the agenda, only items that are not on the agenda anywhere else are to be brought before council or be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Council members shall not enter into a debate with speakers under oral communications. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for each. This is all in the municipal code, and any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council shall be called to order by the presiding officer, that's me. And if such conduct continues, may be at the direction of myself, asked to leave the meeting and barred from further the audience during that meeting. With that said, all welcoming and friendly, we do want to hear from you on various items. And so I have four cards. If there are others, there are yellow cards in the back of the room, please get those and bring them to the end of the table, well, give them to the chief and he'll bring them up. First card I have, and I usually give you a chance to line up or be ready. The first card I have is Bridget Duffy, followed by Roger Medler, followed by Tagaras. And I think I always pronounce that incorrectly. Yes. Bridget.
Hi. Bridget Duffy. Hi. I'm here just to, my family's been in Pacifica for about 30 years, and I love Pacifica. And I love that you have procrastinated for so long in developing it. And I just want to encourage you. I feel as though that development is bearing down on us, that thing the Buddhists talk about, the urge, you know? Everybody has that urge. We have to get bigger, we have to get better, we have to do something. And that's, you know, really the motive operandus for the way we live our lives in our society today, so it's nothing unusual. But I feel like, I mean, and it's not just me saying this, it's, there's evidence, there's scientific evidence, the world is starting to slowly kind of rethink a few things and go in a different direction. You know what I mean? The earth, the climate disruption, I mean, everything that's going on. And I just wanted to encourage you guys to, you know, I think that if we can look 20, 30 years down the road and say, what is going to be valuable then, it'll make a big difference in what we do now. And I feel like the highway widening thing has some edges towards, you know, what's going to be good for development. Meanwhile, there's a beautiful road on the ridge called Skyline Boulevard, and I feel like, wow, why aren't we developing that and making two really nice, fast roads into Pacifica instead of down low where it might be washed away by the ocean in no time at all? And I just, I have a vision for Pacifica of being restored instead of being developed, you know? A beautiful, little, quiet, restored beach town like 20 minutes from San Francisco. That's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Roger Medler, followed by...
Jazz.
There we go.
Hi. I've seen on your TV, it says Free Speech TV. I like that. Anyway, I don't believe that's also really true. I see you spent a million dollars, you have $4 million in debt here, and $1 million is, I believe, is being spent on cover-up protection of a local business for the last 29 years. I have the proof. If you'd like to get in contact with me, I'd like to show you the documents. I have showed them to Ms. Tinfo, but that seems to have gone nowhere. And I see the meaning of drive-by is Chief of Police and the City Manager driving by and investigating businesses, which I don't think that's their job. Maybe they should do their job and give that to the Planning Department. And I believe your city officials need to be investigated, not the businesses. And seeing that your councilwoman and your CEO and your President of the Chamber of Commerce took me to court for a restraining order, that was pretty well planned. That was a real bizarre thing going on there. So I'd like to know, what is the mayor doing on the police report? What are you doing on the police report six years later? Saying I had guns in my garage? Who keeps guns in their garage? You know, do they keep them in their front yard and with the rakes and the shovels? People don't keep guns in their garage. And she says, yeah, I kept guns in my garage. So that was, I guess, that was in order to, well, anyway, I brought that up at the Board of Supervisors, I brought that up at the Board of Supervisors in Redwood City. I thought that was a pretty stupid quote for being on a police report. So you might as well just got a little bit of gas and claimed me as mentally ill. And so the people involved must have thought the false restraining order would have shut me up. Obviously didn't work. So this is outrageous. I think I would suggest the mayor step down and take their city council members with them. I think we've got enough members coming up to take your place. And don't forget to take your city manager with you because she seems to have been caught up in a scandal in Walnut Creek and now possibly in one here. So are you paying her $12,000 a year for relocation, or is she paying you? More wasted money. You need to go.
Okay. Go ahead.
Tiger Jazz, Charles Big Stick.
I could do Mr. Big Stick.
Yeah, that's the easy part. It's phonetic. I made it easy. I thought I tried to make it easy. So this is about Highway 1 widening. And I know that there's, for all intents and purposes, kind of a battle coming between the citizens who don't think it's a good idea and, more likely than not, Caltrans and those who think that is a good idea. So I felt the need to get up at this time because, you know, I work over at the Lindemar Safeway, and that's a cross-section between this bridge project that's going on on Highway 1 right now and the Lindemar improvement that just happened, which is beautiful, by the way. But, you know, being at that cross-section, I get to hear a good chunk of the population describe to me in detail exactly how they feel about some of the side effects of even having a beautiful Lindemar, which is, you know, traffic sucks. And hearing that day in, day out, regardless of my own opinion about the widening of Highway 1, I know that, given the bridge situation, if construction goes ahead, however bad that bridge situation is now, and a whole lot of the population really doesn't like that, it occurs to me the traffic is going to really suck if the Highway 1 widening should go through. So with that in mind and just hearing this, it was annoying me enough that I felt like now would be a good time to say something just because I'm starting to feel that urge. That's the daily observation. And Caltrans being the peoples who are organizing this, I'm wondering whether or not a second opinion is a good idea. Caltrans has a vested interest in their idea, which is money, and so they're going to want to support that. But a second opinion would be a really good thing. You get a third party who doesn't have a vested interest, and they can tell the pros and the cons in an honest way. That would be way cool. And then there's this question of, when the vote comes down, to either allow the Caltrans thing to go through or not is, so like, my understanding is if the council doesn't vote "no" at the time in which the question comes up, we can't have the discussion. Are there better ideas? I don't know whether or not, but that's been presented to me many times as being the case, that until there's a "no" vote, we can't have that conversation. And if that's not the case, can we have a third party investigate so that, you know, we can get all the options on the table is how that goes about? So that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Tree Style. And that's the last card I have.
Good evening, City Council and staff. I also gave you another card on consent calendar. That comes later. Okay. So under oral communications, I'd like to bring to your attention that the City Hall is not handicapped accessible. And this is very important because a letter to the editor was written by a senior citizen who tried to put her ballot in the voting box and was not able to. So I don't know if that can be arranged, where it can be brought down to the bottom of the stairs, or does it really have to be at City Hall? Maybe it can be at the senior center. But this is a real problem, especially if you're dropping a ballot off for somebody else. I know if you mail it for somebody else, you have to sign your name. So there might be some legal issues there. The other thing is, last council meeting, I missed the vote by saying I wanted to speak on consent calendar number three, and it was actually four. But I'm just going to ask a question tonight because it was about shredding obsolete documents. But there was no description of what kind of documents were being shredded. And this is very important because I know for a fact, and I've lived here a lot of years, that some of my police reports were expunged. So not saying that it happened in the Police Department, but they could be invoices, they could be a lot of different things that may be important to the public, and maybe that's the reason you can't balance the budget. So another thing that's been brought to my attention at the senior center, where the seniors go for the computer classes, there's a designated area that's painted red, and it slants down for wheelchairs. But there needs to be a ramp there that goes down to the road, and I don't know if that would be public works or not. But anyway, that was brought to my attention, so I thought I'd bring it to you. Thank you.
There's enough in there that I feel like we need to do a little informational piece at the end, if you don't mind. And the first one, City Manager, I've heard this enough, I'm done with it. There is no $4 million deficit.
No, there is no $4 million deficit in the general fund. What the Speaker is referring to, and which the council is well aware, in putting the budget together last spring, I did identify some other funds, not the general fund. The general fund is balanced, it's our operating fund, but some other funds where there are some deficits that we're investigating at this point.
And those funds are funds that are grant-funded, they're special funds, there are other kind of earmarked funds that have nothing to do with our budget, our balanced budget, or any of those kinds of things?
That's correct. They're referred to typically as special revenue funds.
Yes.
They have strings attached.
And so when, for example, you get money from CCG to build something, and you maybe spent more of that than you thought you did, and that's what you're tracking down?
That's exactly right.
Thank you. And for anybody who's confused about that, City Manager has gone through it with all of the candidates, so they should be well aware. More than 50% of our land is dedicated with GGNRA, open space dedications, et cetera. Is that not true? Our hills are not in danger at this point, except for two ridge lines, one of which is being built upon.
That's my understanding as well. I'm not sure what the percentage is, but I would certainly trust the mayor to know that statistic.
And last but not least, could you describe those obsolete, or the documents we talked about last time?
I'm going to defer to the clerks. I think she probably knows more about the specifics than I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do attach memos, and there is a listing of all the records that are being destroyed with the staff report.
Could you speak up just a hair more?
There's a memo and a list of documents that are being destroyed with those agenda items when they come around.
That's what I thought. Thank you. It actually came with the agenda item itself, so the whole list was there.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And yes, I have Ms. Dyer's card. It is not a consent item, it is an item under consideration, item 13. And that's some bit further. Okay. That brings us to items for consideration. That brings us to items for consideration. I would like to point out to the city clerk, I can't actually see those lights over there. If you could push that up, Heather, or something while you're over there.
Push it.
So, yeah, so the lights are visible from here because we can't see them, yeah.
Can you see them now?
Perfect.
That is much better. I was trying. Okay. First item under consideration is a memorandum of understanding between the City of Pacifica and the Pacifica Police Managers Association. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor Nyheart. Good evening, council members. It's my pleasure to bring this to you tonight. The negotiations between the city and the Pacifica Police Management Association, PPMA, have concluded with a contract that was submitted for your review effective October 13th, 2014, tonight, to December 31st, 2014. As council may recall, the PPMA, along with other police units, was one of the first units to make concessions during negotiations with the city over two years ago. Included in those concessions was an increase of 3% in employee contributions to Calpers' retirement pension costs. It brought the total contribution to 12% of salary. The additional 3% resulted in savings for the city of approximately $24,000 since July 2011, when this concession was made. Employees represented by the PPMA will continue to pay the additional 3% towards Calpers, which is expected to result in over $8,000 annually in savings to the city. Other concessions agreed to in 2012, such as a reduction in sick leave and a discontinuation of the uniform allowance shall be reinstated. And then finally, as you know, each employee in this unit will receive a one-time-only lump sum payment of $1,500 for a total cost to the city of $3,000. So there is no negative fiscal impact to the city. There's actually a savings when you combine the cost of the uniform allowance, along with a one-time lump sum payment, against the 3% that the employees are paying into Calpers, and there's a savings of about $4,000 each year.
Would you say that last part again?
The savings part?
Yes.
There is a savings when you combine the concessions with what employees are getting back of about $4,000 annually.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Questions from council?
Mayor Nyheart, if you didn't, would you indulge me just a moment? This is, I believe, the first time that Heather Quinn has presented to the city council, and she didn't introduce herself. So I'd like to just take a moment and just... Heather, why don't you do that part? So you're naming what you do for the city so that you can become known to the audience.
Absolutely. My name is Heather Quinn, and as council knows, I'm the interim Human Resources Manager for the city, and I've been with the city for over a year now.
Thank you, and thank you for that introduction. Totally forgot. I was so focused on the savings.
Well, you're still used to seeing me as well, so...
All right. Thank you very much. Council, any questions? These are questions, then we open it up to the public. Okay. Mayor Protem?
I just had a quick question. How long has it been since these labor groups have had a pay raise?
I believe it's been since the January of 2011. It's definitely been since 2011.
Great. Thank you. And so they are taking, they're making 12% of their salary is going towards their pension?
Correct. So before that concession, it was 9%, and now it's 12%.
Wow.
Yes.
And so far, these are the only two labor groups that we have that are giving at 12%?
All the police units. So there's this one, the one that I'm about to present on, the Pacifica Police Supervisors Association, and then the Pacifica Police Officers Association, whose MOU came before you a couple of months ago. They are giving at 12% as well.
Okay.
And they're the only units in the city, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
And Councilmember O'Neill?
I was just going to tell the audience that the reason, we've already gone over this in closed session, asked our questions, and, you know, I've been looking at this over many months, so that's why we're not necessarily digging way down into it, so...
Mayor Nyheart, if I might just interject a fact, that I think the last time that the, all of the salary ranges were adjusted was actually beyond the time period that Heather just talked about. I believe it's been coming up on five years.
Oh, thank you.
So it's been quite a while since those have been adjusted.
Oh, nine, yeah.
And this is the time to ask any questions that you have publicly, no matter who you may have asked them of at any given time. Any other questions from council? Okay. Seeing none, any questions from public? I have no yellow cards on this. Okay. Bringing it back to council, what's the pleasure of the council? I just want to thank you, just as a, and I truly want to thank all of our police units for stepping up and coming forward and moving this along. So thank you. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mayor Nyheart. Just wanted to find the spot here.
That is the only thing about not...
Is that it?
Yes.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you. Sorry.
That's why I printed it out.
Technology is not helping at this moment. First, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff that's worked on this and to the managers' association that we came to this agreement. I think it's, I think we'd all see in our financial situation over the last couple of years, it's been stressful and strenuous, but I think the employees have done a great job working together with the city for the most part. And I really want to, I think the police especially have really kind of taken the lead, and they've always kind of been the first in our last couple of rounds of contracts. And so you have to come to the, with the city and kind of forge paths, and I really appreciate that for both the management and then the next, which is the POA. So I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Pacifica and the... Yes?
Resolution approving the memorandum of understanding.
That is, it's in the staff report. Okay.
Am I on the wrong page?
No, no, it's just, I'm just, I'm correcting the staff report.
Correcting the staff report? Okay. Can you tell me what the verbiage again?
Approving the resolution.
Of the memorandum of?
Right. Which approves the memorandum.
Okay. All right. Scratch that. So approve the resolution of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Pacifica and the Pacifica Police Management Association.
Correct. Thanks.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
I could make a second. And then also, I would just like to, again, thank you, Heather, for the work that you've done on this and the negotiations, and just, you've been doing an incredible job since you've been here, so I just want to let you know that. And also love to thank the Pacifica Police Managers for the sacrifices that they've made and their willingness to negotiate with the city during these very difficult times. It has meant a great deal to the community at large, and they've, I just very much appreciate them working with us on that.
Thank you. Councilmember DeGree?
Thank you, Heather, and thank you, Police Department, and also thank you for daily putting your lives on the line for us.
Okay. Okay, and I'll just add my thanks one more time because you actually did step up, so... Everyone, I have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes five to nothing. Thank you. I was like, what was happening? Okay. All right. Our next item is a memorandum of understanding between the City of Pacifica and the Pacifica Police Supervisors Association.
Yes.
And we still have Heather.
Yes, you do. So just like PPMA, the City of Pacifica, or, sorry, Pacifica Police Supervisors Association, PPSA, have concluded negotiations with the city, and the contract will be effective tonight, assuming you ratify it to December 31st, 2014. And just like PPMA, PPSA has also contributed, negotiated an additional 3% that they're contributing towards Calpers' retirement, bringing them to a total of 12% as well. And that result has brought a savings in for the city of approximately $78,000 since July 2011, when the concession was made. And employees represented in this unit will continue to pay that additional 3% for the total of 12. And that will result in about $26,000 in annual savings to the city. Other concessions agreed to in 2012, such as a reduction in vacation accrual and discontinuation of the uniform allowance shall be reinstated. And just to note for the record that there's a mistake in the staff report. It says that there is a reduction in floating holidays, and that's not the case. This unit doesn't get any floating holidays. So finally, like the other police units, each employee in this unit will receive a one-time-only lump sum payment of $1,500 per employee for a total cost of $10,500. And this MOU does not include any other salary increases. And so the total savings combined with the concession of the additional $3,000, and then the rolling back of some of the concessions that were made in 2012, results in a savings of about $9,000 per year for the city.
Wonderful. Any questions from council? Mayor Protem?
I'd just like to repeat the same question I asked the last time, and I'm assuming that the last time that they received a pay raise was in 2009, then, or five years?
Yes, roughly 2009, 2010. We're coming up on the five years.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions from council? Questions?
Yeah, just, Heather, do you recall when we approved with the Police Officers Association, were the concessions there and how much are we saving, so that, like, the total savings from the Police Department?
You know, I could get back to you on that. I don't recall off the top of my head.
I know it was seven months ago, so, okay.
Yeah, I just don't recall off the top of my head. But I'm happy to get back to you on that.
Okay. I have no yellow cards on this. Anyone from the audience? Seeing no one jumping up, I bring it back to council. Councilmember Stone?
I just wanted to reiterate my comments before for the last unit. Thanks for the POA, and I look forward to continuing with the other units, hopefully continues to move on. And thanks for kind of being the first round, and I know that takes a lot of coming to the plate and having a lot of, you know, back and forth, and I appreciate all the work from everyone and staff, and also the bargaining teams. Appreciate that. So I'll just make a motion to approve a resolution adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of Pacifica and the Pacifica Police Supervisors Association, excuse me, for the period of October 13th through December 31st. Oops.
Great. Mayor Protem?
I'll second that. And then also, I'd like to thank you as well for the work that you've done in this negotiation, and thank the Pacifica Police Supervisors Association for their willingness to negotiate and make the sacrifices that they have had to move us forward.
I just want to, sorry, I misspoke and said POA, but I meant the Management Association. Excuse me.
Okay. Well, the Management Association was the first one, so this one's the Supervisors Association, but we're good.
Sorry.
Because we've covered all bases up here. Guys, I'm going to thank you all. Thanks to the Police Department in general for stepping up and moving this along. So supervisors, managers, and POAs. So thank you all. Any other comments from... We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, it's that time of year where we get to discuss our next item, which is a report on 4th of July and 4th of July activities. And I think the news is relatively good, but I can't wait to hear. Thank you. Thanks.
There we go. It's warming up. All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Mayor Protem and City Councilmembers. I'm Dan Stidl. I'm a captain with the Pacifica Police Department. Tonight, I'll be presenting to you the City of Pacifica 4th of July report for 2014. You may recall that on February 10th, 2014, Chief Tasso of the Pacifica Police Department presented this council with a report on the 2013 4th of July activities. In that report, there were four recommendations that were set forth that it was suggested that we address when we were planning the 2014 4th of July activities this year. The first of those addressed the 2013 closure of the Lindemar and South Rockaway Beach parking lots for the entire day. Those parking lots were closed for the entire day because they were designated as safe and sane firework areas where community members could go to those lots in the evening hours and shoot the fireworks off without having to worry about vehicular traffic. The downside of closing those lots all day was they restricted some parking spaces that could be normally used by beachgoers. So for 2014, we rectified that by allowing beachgoers to use those parking lots until 4:00 PM. The Department of Public Works set up barricades with reminders to citizens that they had to have their vehicles out of the parking lot by 4:00 PM on the 4th of July, or they would be removed. So that's how we addressed that issue. The second thing that came up was to expand the 4th of July anti-litter campaign to be a year-round campaign. And again, this came about, you know, as part of our campaign to try to keep the beaches clean and try to keep our community clean after 4th of July. Chief Tasso worked with Recology in developing a slogan and developing a poster. And as you go around town these days, if you take a look at some of the business storefronts, you'll see that poster out there with a garbage can cartoon that talks about keeping Pacifica clean. And again, we did that with the intention on putting that out in the forefront of the community members' minds. The third thing that we needed to attack was to reduce the city costs to coincide with the 8% fireworks safety surcharge. If I could back up for a minute, I left my prop back there.
The poster.
This was...
I love it.
Garbage can. We haven't named it yet. That may be something coming in the future. Again, it would just say, help us, be a litter-free community, keep Pacifica clean, and Recology symbols on the bottom there because the posters that were handed out were a donation from Recology. They paid for this for us.
Very good. And I've seen them all over, so thank you.
They're getting the message out. People are more than happy to keep them in their storefronts for us. Again, the third thing was to reduce city costs to coincide with the 8% fireworks safety surcharge fee. As you may recall, that safety surcharge fee is an 8% fee that's placed on the sales of fireworks. The purpose of that fee is to assist the city to recoup the costs that it takes us to run the 4th of July operations. And if you take a look at this chart, you'll see I have a breakdown of costs for 2013 and 2014 from the Pacifica Police Department, the North County Fire Authority, the Pacifica Department of Public Works. In 2013, as you can see, the city costs for the 4th of July were $49,719. We were able to reduce that in 2014 to $33,576 for a 32% decrease. And if you look in that right-hand column, you'll see that police, fire, and public works all made their contributions to reducing that cost. Those costs were primarily reduced by reducing the number of hours we had personnel in place and also reducing the number of hours of overtime that we used for the 4th of July holiday. And in further looking at the reduction of our costs, you'll see again the cost of city services are reiterated on the top line here, and it explains what the 8% safety fee was from 2013 to 2014. And finally, the most important number, you know, how we fared in our attempt to make our costs in line with that 8% fee. So for 2014, we were just about $900 in deficit in terms of recouping our city costs. But you'll see, that's a far cry from where we were in 2013, when we were over $15,000 in deficit. in deficit. So it appears that the collaboration of the city departments in this matter was very, very successful. The last thing that we wanted to do was develop a social host ordinance to address illegal fireworks. And the Pacifica Police Department worked in collaboration with the city attorney, and unfortunately, we were unable to develop an ordinance that would deter illegal fireworks and be enforceable. So as we began to prepare for the 4th of July, we took a collaborative approach. We had meetings between the North County Fire Authority, Department of Public Works, and the Pacifica Police Department. We discussed and exchanged operational plans, and we discussed logistical considerations, frankly, to make sure that we were all on the same page and we were doing business efficiently as possible. We embarked on a community education campaign. The Pacifica Police Department and the North County Fire Authority embarked on a media campaign utilizing both web-based media and print media in order to get the word out what the dangers and the ramifications would be for using illegal fireworks, as well as how to use safe and sane fireworks and when and where they could be used. The Pacifica Department of Public Works was also very helpful in this area, and they posted a lot of signage in the beach areas, explaining to the community that they could not use illegal fireworks and, again, where and when they could use the safe and sane fireworks. Again, in our preparation, we took, the departments had in the forefront of their mind, the fiscal considerations. How could we operate efficiently yet still produce a safe and enjoyable 4th of July for the community? And finally, in terms of preparations for the 4th of July, we considered the one big activity that takes place after the 4th of July, and that is how do we clean up this mess? And we worked in collaboration with the Department of Public Works, the Department of Public Works, the Pacifica Beach Coalition, and the Pacifica Police Department together to develop a plan of how to attack that problem. Then came the day of the event. The Department of Public Works played a big role in making the event very successful, making the event enjoyable for our community. They provided a great deal of logistical support for our operations, including placing barricades and signs, as we talked about, in the affected parking lots that needed to be closed by 4:00 PM for the safe and sane fireworks folks. They also set up metal barricades at Lindemar Beach, where every year we set up our police mobile command post, which becomes the hub of law enforcement activity for the evening. The Department of Public Works also took care of making sure the proper trash receptacles were in place and making sure they were as empty as possible. One of the things that I think is very much overlooked, because it's behind the scenes on a major day like this, is the number of people that comes in, come into town. If you remember, it was a very nice day on July 4th. The beaches were packed, the parking lots were packed all day long. And the Department of Public Works went out there, they made sure that our city facilities were operational, they made sure the showers and the beaches continued to work, they made sure that the area was clean as could possibly be, they made sure the bathrooms were clean and were stocked. And it's all these little things that Public Works did that came together that made it a pleasant day in our community for the citizens that wanted to use our public facilities. The North County Fire Authority was also very active on the day of July 4th. They went out and they conducted preventative patrols during the evening, wherein fire personnel went out and they looked for hotspots, problem areas, in terms of trying to prevent fires and prevent problems. Fire personnels, including folks at the Battalion Chief and Deputy Chief level, were out interacting with our citizens, getting out of their vehicles, talking to citizens about how they, about the consequences of using illegal fireworks, as well as how to use safe and sane fireworks properly and prevent fires. The other big thing they did was, in their plan, is they prepositioned personnel and fire apparatus throughout town, knowing very well that the streets would be clogged with celebrations that evening and the highway would likely be busy as well. So they prepositioned apparatus such that anywhere in town, if there was an emergency, the fire department could get there quickly. As always, the 4th of July was a big day and a very busy day for the Police Department. Our enforcement efforts included 12-hour shifts for evening and graveyard personnel to provide the best coverage on the streets that we could. We established a command post at the Lindemar Beach. We took a zero-tolerance approach to illegal firework violations by way of having out beach enforcement teams, neighborhood enforcement teams, and patrol teams. Now, the beach enforcement teams were responsible, officers assigned to the beaches, responsible specifically for enforcing illegal fireworks laws on the beaches and keeping the beaches safe. The neighborhood enforcement teams were teams of officers that were both uniformed and plainclothes that were responsible for roaming the neighborhoods and identifying problem areas where illegal fireworks and large-scale illegal fireworks were being discharged. And then, of course, there are always our patrol teams. Those were the officers that were out on the street, and they were handling our day-to-day calls for service, which were very, they were very high that day because of the firework In our enforcement efforts, one of the things we did this year, as we did last year, is that the area of Lindemar Beach that was defined as an area where, the only area on the beach where safe and sane fireworks could be discharged, we assigned officers to that area who successfully made sure that those safe and sane fireworks were only being lit off in those specific areas. The final thing that we did that day of note was, we posted two reserve police officers at the intersection of State Route 1 and San Pedro Road. The reason for that was, we all know about the construction going on on Highway 1 in the detour where southbound traffic has to turn right onto San Pedro Road. We knew there would be heavy traffic that evening, so we posted those officers out there to make sure the citizens could get across the street safely and to make sure that both pedestrians and drivers were respecting each other's right-of-way. Overall, for that evening, officers issued 15 administrative fireworks citations for possession and/or discharge of illegal fireworks. The next chart is just a short breakdown of our calls for, police calls for service that were related to fireworks in 2014. And as you could see in the very beginning of the day, from midnight on 4th of July to 4:00 PM, the calls for service are relatively low. The middle of the day, they pick up, but at 8:30 is when they skyrocket. Between 8:30 PM and 1:00 AM on the 4th of July, we handled over 80 calls for service. There were a total of 111 firework-related calls for service in 2014. And if you want to compare that to 2013, it was exactly the same, 111. And finally, cleaning up after the mess. Cleanup efforts this year, again, were led by the Department of Public Works, who did a great job of assisting in cleaning up not only the beach, but all the refuse left behind by fireworks in the neighborhoods. They worked in conjunction with the Pacifica Beach Coalition to clean the beaches. And as you probably know, the folks that sell, the nonprofit groups that sell the safe and sane fireworks each year are required to put in a certain number of hours on the beaches after the 4th of July and for several coming weekends afterwards. This year, volunteers put in 160 hours. They did receive accolades from different people in the community and compliments for the work they did. And I spoke to the Pacifica Beach Coalition, who said they were very, very happy and pleased with the work that the nonprofit groups did in cleaning up. So in some of our 4th of July, we had a very successful collaborative response among city departments. We had an operational period that was free of major incidents. However, it should be noted, the one concern that is still out there is the chief complaint amongst our citizens, and that is the discharge of illegal fireworks and the noise they create and the fire hazard they create. The departments addressed the issues that were identified from the 2013 report presented by Chief Tassa, and we believe we have a model in place for a successful 2015 4th of July. I would also like to take the opportunity to thank the North County Fire Authority, the Department of Public Works, the Pacifica Beach Coalition, as well as the folks from TNT and Phantom Fireworks, who all worked together this year to make this 4th of July very safe and very enjoyable for the community. I'd like to thank the council very much for their time this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Councilwoman DeGree, your light's been on for a while.
Oh, that was for something else.
Oh, so sorry.
Am I doing questions now?
Yeah.
I don't have a question.
Okay. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you for the report. And I did have a question. I think it was on your third slide, just about the reduction in costs. And my question, not so much about the reduction in costs, but just costs in general. And in just tallying these up, are these in addition to just normal operating costs? Or do these have embedded in them, like a day of, you know, like today, for instance, I'm sure all these, you know, the fire, police, there's certain costs to that. Are those daily costs included in these numbers?
There are representatives from fire and public works here that could address their departments better than I could. For police, I can tell you that these costs that are listed here are for that specific day only. They include all the enforcement teams that are out there. They do not include the regular patrol officers that are working their normal beats. Aside from, if they're working a 12-hour shift, two hours of that overtime, you know, might be included in that.
So it's a special number for you, or it's on top of your normal costs?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. And I'll hold my next question.
Okay. Mayor Protam?
So you said that there was basically no precedence for the social host ordinance? Is that correct? Okay. And maybe I would, just wondering if somebody could comment further on that. Why is, why can't we do that? Why is that such a significant problem?
One of the big problems that we found when we were trying to craft language is making the language enforceable, meaning that unlike our social host ordinance, it's very easy to identify where there's a party or where there's loud noise. Unfortunately, identifying where an illegal firework display is emanating from is not as easy to, number one, determine, but also, number two, to actually write into an ordinance that's not vague or ambiguous. So we took several different stabs at trying to come up with an ordinance that was both enforceable and clear and unambiguous, and we were not able to come up with the language. And when we looked at other cities, we could not find other sample firework ordinances as well, so.
Right. I imagine the burden of proof, you know, is pretty difficult to overcome that obstacle.
Well, it's hard to, I would think for an officer to look at a home and tell, you know, exactly where that firework was emanating from, number one. Number two, it's only, safe and sane fireworks are allowed. It's only an illegal type that, you know.
Right.
It's just, it's hard to craft an ordinance that is specific enough that is enforceable.
Fair enough. Thank you. I had one more question, and that was also regarding Slide 3, when you talked about the 48% reduction in the fire and 28% in public works. I was wondering, were there any real significant consequences of those reductions? It didn't sound like it, and I'm impressed with how well everybody did with the reductions.
Well, thank you. And, you know, based on what I saw that night and what we've reported back, is there wasn't any significant consequences for that, being that we had, like I spoke about earlier, an operational period free of any major incidents. So we were able to keep it under control, and things went our way that night. So, you know, as it stood that night, there were not any major consequences.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neill?
I was just kind of curious, is, with all the technology and, like, you know, military hardware, where they seem, I mean, they can see a license plate in a car. Have we ever explored any way to settle down and say, okay, this house, 1234 Lindemar did it? You know, because we get the complaint August, September, long after July 4th.
Yeah, actually, that's a real good question, because we have looked into that. The only thing that we could find that we even would come, even remotely close to doing the job for us, you may have heard of ShotSpotter technology. The problem is, when you have a firework problem, it's mobile in that it may be one house, one night, and then maybe a couple of months later, you have another house in the other end of town, and you start getting complaints for a couple of weeks about another area and another part of the town. The technology isn't mobile. It's fixed. It costs several hundreds of thousands of dollars to put in place, and that's just the start for bare-bones systems. The amount of money that it would cost to put in place in Pacifica to make it work, like they do in certain cities like East Palo Alto, where they have continual gunfire problem, it just wouldn't be worth what we would get for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman DeGree?
I actually did have a question on Page 175. It's not on that. I was just wondering, consequences, I think you said, or the report said that there were four that did not pay the fines. It's regarding fines, post-event activities. Seven of these fines have been paid in full, four violators are making payments, and four have been invoiced with no payment. I was just wondering, those four that didn't, aren't paying, they're not going to get away with it, right?
I would certainly hope not. That's something that the Finance Department is taking care of. All of the 4th of July fireworks sites, administrative fines go through the Finance Department. That data's coming straight from them.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, I had a few questions, just to clear this up, because people say different things. And maybe the city manager or you, I don't know who has, but on citations, how are those citations, the proceeds from that? Does that all come to us? Or is it shared with the county? Does it go back to vehicle? What?
I believe that all goes to us. That's an administrative citation based on, you know, our municipal code. It's not based on a penal code or a vehicle code.
Okay. And then, the beach cleanup. You know, we've had people come in here and show us some significant debris that's left over long after the cleanup has happened, those little, just stuff that shows up in the sand. Any thoughts on that and how we control that better? I mean, we did limit the area of the beach, right?
Yes, we did. And I think that was our best avenue to control it. I'm not sure what the reports are after this, this 4th of July period. I know in past years, it's been a significant problem in that we allowed, especially Lindemar Beach, we allowed the whole beach to be used. But it's a very defined area, so it would be my hope that they would notice a significant difference in it this year.
Okay. And the other question I have, because I had that rare privilege this year of coming home after dusk and being at the top of the hill and seeing the amount of illegal fireworks all over the bay, everywhere. I mean, I was just stunned. We often get very, very focused on Pacifica, and the hill kind of blocks it. But are other fire departments and other police departments on extra hours or extra staffing for 4th of July in general? And just taking North County, I specifically would want to know, does North County staff up in Daly City as well?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Both police and fire, all over the county for that matter, are on high alert. They have extra personnel out there just to deal with the problems that come with the 4th of July celebrations.
So I guess what I'm saying is, well, the 8% covers something.
Yes, it does. Absolutely.
Okay. And then, when you were talking about noise and location, those, I don't know what they are, they're M1000s or something. They're like a bomb growing off under your house. It's, I mean, I had one, I swore it was right outside of the house. And yet, the whole neighborhood swore it was right outside of their house. Is that part of the problem? Is that the sound carries so much, it's hard to locate?
Yes. And the problem when it comes to locating who's doing what with devices like that is twofold. The first problem is, like you said, the sound travels. If you have a device that's large enough, that's readily accessible to, you know, people purchasing illegal fireworks, you know, it gets, like, in your experience, it could sound like it's coming from under your house, but it might be three or four blocks away, and everybody has the same experience.
Book me right up.
The other problem with it is, people, unless you're actually observing them commit the violation, it's difficult to do anything to enforce the law. The problem is, they're smart enough, they're not going to shoot the firework and then stand there next to the debris and wait for you to arrive, which is the reason why we have so many extra people out working the 4th of July, so we can kind of narrow those odds a little bit in hopes that we can catch them.
Right. So I saw our North County representative back there. Just get up. Were you going to comment on what North County does and the rest of, did you have anything to add? Come and represent.
Okay. Very good. Deputy Chief Johnson. Yes, all three jurisdictions staffed.
Okay, very good. Deputy Chief Johnson, yes, all three jurisdictions staff up with extra personnel. Two companies here in Pacifica, two companies in Daly City, and an extra company in Brisbane.
I really can't hear you, so start from the introduction of yourself.
Uh, Richard Johnson, Deputy Car Chief. In all three jurisdictions, we staff up. And so there are two companies in, in Pacifica, two companies in Daly City, and a company in Brisbane. Daly City is beginning to get some carryover from San Francisco coming down, and a little bit from Pacifica going up. Pacifica is our most concerned, just because of the quantity. And as Catherine Stidl said, we try to position our resources in such a manner as, particularly in Pacifica, with the, only the Highway 1 access up and down. So if something does happen in a certain area, we have a quick response. Because for these types of incidents, that very first quick response is paramount to controlling it.
Okay, thank you. I will say the, my experience is, the best view of fireworks anywhere is from the roof of 72, so. Sad. Councilmember O'Neil, did you have another question?
No, actually, I was just going to comment on, on something you made about how people come in here and they bring the litter, that when we were doing the-
Wasn't what I was referring to, but go ahead and comment on that.
Well, bringing in the, the fireworks stuff months afterwards, was when we were doing the fireworks task force, one of the biggest offenders was a thing called cactus flowers. And it has like this little green ball that splits up and stuff, right? And it somehow buries itself in the sand and comes up. But I believe the gentleman from TNT is back there, but we, when we were talking at the fireworks task force, we could, you know, pass an ordinance where those could be banned from the city if we wanted to. And that the, I don't know if it'd be an ordinance or whatever, but that we would have to do it early because like boxed stuff is being packaged right now, as we speak. So if we did it, let's say, this year, we could outlaw them, you know, just individuals, but there. So I'm, I'm just passing on information that was given to us at the fireworks task force.
Okay. Any other questions? I have no yellow cards on this from the community, anybody wanting to speak. No one's rushing forward, so I'm going to bring it back to council. What's the pleasure of the council? Councilwoman DeGry?
I definitely encourage council to accept the report on July 4th. I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, so that was a motion, I take it, to accept. Do I have a second? Councilmember Stone?
Second.
Okay, your comment?
Uh, really appreciated all the collaboration. I think that was great. And I don't want to pour any, it's going so well. I do still have a concern that there is still a cost, the 800. But since everybody's working well together, and especially kudos to the Public Works, as you mentioned. The fact that things are nice and clean, it does send an attitude, which is a type of enforcement that when you come here or you live here, don't mess up. So I think that's very helpful, and I love the teams that you sent out. It was great. Thanks.
Mayor Protem?
I'd like to express my appreciation and very grateful for all of the work that the police, the fire, our Public Works does, it's on this specific day. And I'd also really like to thank the Pacifica Beach Coalition, which does help reduce the costs and has, and all the volunteers that are part of the Pacifica Beach Coalition that work so well with our city in order to help clean up Pacifica during this time. It's just a beautiful collaboration in a very difficult situation. So I very much appreciate all the volunteers and the Pacifica Beach Coalition, as well as all the city staff that work so hard to make this a successful holiday in Pacifica.
Okay, Councilmember O'Neil?
Yeah, I'd like to echo all those comments about staff, the police, fire, Public Works, and also the Beach Coalition. But I would also like to thank the many youth groups and nonprofits that after the fireworks booth are closed and gone, and they have their check, they still come out to clean the beach, and they spend 160 hours. And these are, you know, parents who are already putting time in for their sports teams, PTOs, and, and, you know, whatever else their kid might be into. But I think we also need to thank the citizens and the nonprofits that bring their volunteers out afterwards.
Okay, and I, we have a motion in a second. I'm going to echo all those thanks to everybody from the police through Public Works and the Beach Coalition and the volunteers and the community groups. But I'd like to see an estimate of costs if we didn't have these. If we just had to staff up and then clean up the beach and illegals and that sort of stuff. And just as a point of comparison, because I think we actually probably saved quite a bit. But that's just a guess. So that's just one thought for the future reports. And with that, could we please vote? And we accept the report, five to zero. Thank you. And, oh boy, we've got Recology. Do you need a break? Okay, we're good. We're going to do, uh, item 12, Recology of the Coast Rate Adjustment for 2015. Staff report, please.
Kathy O'Connell, City Clerk, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. In February of 2010, the City of Pacifica entered into a franchise agreement with Recology of the Coast for recyclable materials, organic materials, and solid waste collection services. The agreement was amended in March of 2013. Under the agreement, Recology may submit a rate increase adjustment for the city council's approval. The rate adjustment for rate period number six, which is January 1st, 2015, through December 31st, 2015, requires submittals of documentation to the city by September 1st, 2014. The city has received the submittal and is in the process of reviewing Recology's rate adjustment request of 1.87%. This is an index-based rate adjustment pursuant to section 11.0, or 03 of the franchise agreement annual rate application process. The rates have not been raised since 2012. A comparison of rates between current and those requested to be increased is attached as attachment one. The process: In accordance with the settlement agreement between the City of Pacifica, Recology, and Lionel M.D., a public notice will be sent to all customers liable for payment of the proposed fee increase, informing them of a public hearing set for December 8th, 2014. And the process for the protest hearing is described. In order to meet a 45-day noticing period, notices will be mailed to October 14th, 2014. See attachment two, for example, which is in your staff report. Individuals will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed rate increase during the 45-day period, as well as during the public hearing on December 8th. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the city clerk shall complete the tabulation of all protests received and shall report the results of the tabulation to the city council upon completion. If the review of the protests received demonstrates that the number received is manifestly less than one-half of the parcels served by the city with respect to the fee which is subject to the protest, then the city clerk may advise the city council of the absence of a majority protest without determining the validity of all protest. Fiscal impact: As proposed and per the methodology in the franchise agreement, Recology's rate adjustment is an increase, as stated, 1.87%. There are no increases or decreases to city fees, as these are not subject to the rate adjustment. Residential customers, most of whom subscribe to the 20-gallon can, over 51% of the city's residential customers switched to the smaller can service with the new recycling and composting program. Monthly rate would increase from 23.28 to 23.82 per month, or an increase of 44 cents per month, or $5.28 annually. We have Chris Porter here from Recology to answer any questions you may have regarding the rate adjustment.
Okay, um, I assume we're getting a full report at the next, when, I mean, we'll get a full report from Recology at the, when we actually do the public hearing and accept the 218 and all that stuff, or is that?
Uh, you will get a staff report. There will be a public hearing. All the documents submitted will be available.
But I'm talking about from Recology.
I'm sure they'd be happy to provide a report at the December meeting.
Usually, you've done a, you know, a little more in-depth there. Why the increases, what's the, I mean, you know, you've done a report.
Chris Porter, Recology of the Coast. We have had no, we had no increase last year whatsoever. This increase is very minimal, 1.87%. The majority of people that are using, 51% are using the 20-gallon can. When we switched to Recology, there was 10% people using the 20-gallon can. Now there's 51% of people using the 20-gallon can, which means they reverted from a 30 or 32 down to a 20. At the new rate, these people are paying 17% less than they paid in 2007. Recology is a good partner to the city. The Climate Action Control Plan proves that we're a good partner to the city. And I heard about the fireworks. The day after the 4th of July, I know for a fact that the general manager, the operations manager, and the office manager of Recology went out and cleaned up in the streets with a couple of the company trucks. And then our guys were picking up for the next couple of days. And all these different activities that we do in coordination with the other, um, groups in the city. The Beach Coalition, which is a great organization for this town, but Recology pays the majority of, of the costs for them. They do the manpower, but we take away everything at no cost to anyone. And if, if all these different groups had to pay for what gets taken away, it would definitely put a, a crimp in, in what they could accomplish. So we happily do that, even though that is not in the franchise that we have to do these types of things. There are certain cleanups that we do, do the VOG Festival and things like that, the different city cans, different things like that, that we, we do according to the franchise agreement. But we want to be a good neighbor with everyone in this town and help out as best as we can. There, of course, is information on the blogs now that Recology is, you know, asking for another rate increase. And to put a chart out that says, this city pays $10, this city pays 15, you, it, it's hard to do a comparison like that because there's all types of different services. There's all types of different franchise fees, and fees in these different cities. Just for an example, Daly City, they have no 20-gallon can rate. They have minimal commercial recycling. Pacifica has a very small commercial base. And in the technology of doing the rate setting, the commercials, half of the equation, is always paying more because of the weight, because of different things like that. So you have like a San Mateo that has Hillsdale and, and all these other Bay Meadows construction going on now. Or, you know, San Bruno has Tanforan and Bay Hill and all these other different operations. Close to 50% of our commercial customers use a 30-gallon cart. So there's no, you know, and, and in one respect, I'm really happy about that because it means that they're recycling and they're composting and doing things like that. So we're at 75% diversion, which is excellent. I remember when we struggled to get to 50. So, um, it's, it's, um, it's a challenge for me sometimes to explain, you know, why our rate is this, or why someone else's rate is that. But I think if you use our programs, if you recycle, if you come to the recycling yard, if you take advantage of our shredding events, or, or composting events, different things like that, you're going to be paying the minimal service.
I just wanted to make a suggestion that if we could add to the next report, the first part of what you said. I mean, there's no doubt in my mind, Recology is a good community partner. But the issue about the change in the percentage of, of size of waste and thus cost.
I'll write, I'll write a report to go with Lori's report.
That would be appreciated. And, and I, the community part is not certainly a good thing, but it's not part of the rate. And so I just want to keep it clear for everybody in terms of where the costs really are. So if you could just make a little statement about that.
Any donation that Recology makes to anybody is not part of the rate-setting mechanism. That comes out of the profit from Recology.
That's right.
And it's Recology's philosophy to be a good neighbor and to be involved in the city wherever we're needed and on organizations. So I'm everywhere.
I appreciate it. Mayor Protem, did you have questions of staff, or?
I actually had a question for Ms. Porter. Thanks for the overview that, that did answer a lot of my questions. I was just going to ask a very basic question, but I think it's important that it's addressed. Can you answer, why do the rates, why do costs continue to go up annually or every couple of years? What is the main push to?
Part of the cost-setting mechanism is that the, the major components are the disposal fee, or the wages.
Okay.
We are union, also Local 350 that you were bargaining with tonight. Insurance, fuel. Fuel is a big one. We have signed our agreement with, Local 350 goes through 2016. So it's a four-year agreement, and I felt it was a very good agreement. The, the wage increases fluctuate according to different, um, rates within the Bay Area. So, um, it, it was, it was very fair. But that is why things go on. But on the other hand of the, the other side of the equation, we do everything we can to keep rates down. We, you know, our, our, this last year, our men had one accident the whole year. And that's pretty remarkable. We were the best in Recology. So, um, we're careful. My men are very, have been with me, the majority of them, 20 years. They're, they're steady. They know their routes. But most of the reasons why rates go up is our, things out of our control.
Thank you for elaborating on that. It's helpful.
I believe you also have increased fees related to AB 32 and a few other things for waste disposal. You can't just do some of the things that we have done in the past.
No.
So it's much more restrictive.
Absolutely.
Any other comments from council? Okay, I have one card from the public. That is Tree Stier. Anyone else that wants to speak on this item should turn in a yellow card.
Yeah, I'd just like to compliment recology because they do a lot of extra work that they don't have to. For instance, down at the senior center, they provided a debris box for the Boy Scouts when they were cleaning the planters there and so forth. So the other thing I want to bring up is the City of Pacifica gets a pretty good chunk when it comes to the franchise, you know, agreement with recology. And I know for two years, in fact, recology gave $186,000 back to the city. That was one year. And I don't remember the figure on the other year, but I think it was even more. And so I think the city can afford to step back and give a rebate program, have some kind of rebate program to, to the ratepayers, you know. I mean, after all, we were the ones that recycled, we saved and everything, and the burden shouldn't be on the recology so much as it should be as a rebate. You know, the water department has rebate program, PG&E has rebate program. So give us an incentive and reduce our rates. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other yellow cards. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that, let's see, it's been, I think we're five years into the agreement with recology about that approximately. And I think recology's been an excellent partner with the city. I'm glad you mentioned, Ms. Porter, the diversion rate. That means people are recycling, they're using their compost, and I think our community really values that. And also too, it gives them an opportunity to use the smaller can and reduce their costs. And I think it's a great point that you brought up that when they first started, the smaller can, when it was coastside scavengers, most people had a larger can and were paying higher rate. So over half the city actually has a lower rate now because they're recycling and using compost and all that. So I think that's great. And so this, what we're dealing with tonight is just this modest increase. And considering there hasn't been an increase, there wasn't an increase last year at all, this seems extremely modest, just a few cents a month. So I'll just make a motion that move that the City Council adopt a resolution of the City of Pacifica directing staff to issue notice of public hearing for new or increased solid waste collection services, fees, and charges.
Mayor Protem?
I'll second that. And I'd also just like to extend my appreciation to the fact that I know that recology does do a great deal for our community and that is greatly appreciated, all the, you know, whether it's on Fourth of July or on, throughout the year. I know that you are, have been a very generous partner with the, with, within the city. And I appreciate that. And, and I also, you know, I hope our diversion rate continues to rise, 75% is, is very commendable. But I hope all the citizens can work together and strive for lower fees and therefore, you know, zero waste. And I think all those things will be very beneficial to our community. And I agree that I think a 44 cent a month rate increase is very small. And there hasn't been one in quite some time. And I do feel that you're doing what you can to minimize those rate increases for the, for the members of the community. So thank you.
Thank you. I have no other lights, but I do want to make a comment. I do appreciate everything that you do. I think the diversion rate with recology is amazing. It helps us dramatically meet our climate action goals. It also is incredible just in terms of the ease at which many people are still sorting and the single stream is over the moon for me. I'm still very, very pleased that recology in a large part is an employee-owned company. That makes me very, very, very pleased about where we're going with that. But, and this is not directed at you in general, it's directed at education in terms of the public. But I hear about franchise fees all the time. And to imply that it's somehow kind of free money the city's getting or something like that. And I just want to remind people that that rebate could happen. But then we're going to need to figure out how to assess for those ruts that are now existing in Palmetto and a few other places, because the trucks are quite heavy, a large degree of potholes and other things come from, and this is not about you, this is about just getting the kind of service that we need. And when you look in front of the place on Palmetto and you think about when that was last paved and how deep the ruts are in the street and how much oil and other things, it costs way more than the franchise fee to maintain. And the price of paving even half of Lindemar Boulevard doesn't, this doesn't even touch it. So it's not a small thing and it's not free money. It's actually pays for what it takes to support garbage collection in our community, and I'm proud to do it and I'm glad to do it. I would just put out a word of thought as we move forward on Palmetto and sometime in the future that we sort of think about recology and the exits and where that's going to be, because if we improve that street.
We talked to the same.
Okay, all right. Because you know what I'm talking about with that.
Say one thing.
Well, we didn't ask you a question, but I suppose that the prerogative of the mayor, I could let you speak.
I think what Mrs. Stier was talking about, it wasn't the franchise fee, it was if, according to our contract, if we reach X amount of dollars from recycling, there is a breakpoint.
Right.
And then we divide that with the city. So I know last year it wasn't that much.
That's excellent.
It wasn't, it was a lot two years ago when the prices were really high. But last year, it wasn't that much. And I agree with you 1,000%.
Thank you.
That, about the franchise fees helping to, to, and I wish we could get money from Daily City for the trucks, their trucks that.
I know, that come and use our streets, yep.
Those are the heavy-duty trucks.
All right. Well, we have a motion in a second on the table and I'm going to call the question. Unless there's any other comment, please vote. And that, Kathy, does something, passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris. Okay, and the last item in our regular agenda is to item 13, repeal and replace Chapter Four, the purchasing system of Title III of Finance of the Pacifica Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Lori Tenfo, the city manager, I'll be speaking on behalf of the team of staff that it took to bring this to you tonight. It was done in conjunction with the city clerk's office, with the city attorney's office, and then with feedback from all of the department heads so that we made a comprehensive review and a comprehensive update. There are really three things that this report is bringing forward to you. One of them is moving our purchasing rules out of an ordinance and into a policy. And the benefit of that is that it makes it easier to make adjustments to the policy in the future. And this is a policy that we should review on a regular basis. It's also a more standard way for cities to describe what their purchasing rules are. I mentioned it's more comprehensive. For example, if you looked at our ordinance and the policy, you'll note that the policy talks about using credit cards. And since the last time that we looked at this, which was, I believe, 2000, many things have changed. And so this is one of the elements that we really do need to have as part of our rules and regulations, and the policy calls that out. The third thing I'll highlight for you is that we're also recommending that the authority, the signature authority, the authorization to make purchases, we're also recommending that those be adjusted and adjusted upward. There are two tables in the report. The first one talks about what the policy includes in terms of these numbers. And so just as a comparison, currently, any contract, any purchase that the city makes that's $25,000 and over comes to you all for approval. Below $25,000, then I can authorize that. As, so the, this will adjust all of the levels for not just me, but for also for department heads. And so to sort of net it out, we're recommending that the authority for the city manager be increased to $50,000 and anything over that come to you. We also did a little scouting around other cities, and you'll see a comparison in the report as well, that gives you a sense, just for some cities nearby, what their authority levels are. And I'll just draw your attention again to the city manager versus city council approval. So in San Mateo, the city manager can approve up to $100,000, over that must go to their city council. In Milbrae, it's $50,000, over that must go to the city council. And then San Carlos, it's actually $75,000, and over that must go to the city council. So again, just to reiterate, what we're recommending is just increasing ours up to $50,000. So with that, I think I'll stop and just note that we're also asking council, in terms of your action, to, that we are going to be asking you to introduce the ordinance tonight, and then it will come back for adoption at your next meeting. I'm not sure that was as clear in the report as we wanted it to be. So with that, I'll be happy to answer your questions, or maybe other staff can answer them.
Questions. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you for the report. You know, in talking with other council members and yourself, I know that there's a CPI on other cities. So they actually, they set it, but then there's an annual small increase on that. And that seems to make sense because it keeps pace with inflation. Would that be something that would be helpful to staff?
It would be very helpful, probably need to come back to you less frequently to make adjustments.
Yeah. Because, I mean, I know we're just questions now, but ours is at such a low rate right now. Anyway, might be something for the council that you want maybe put in there.
Any other questions from council? No. I have one card from the public, and that's Tree Stier.
Yes, this, this must be the language changed or whatever, but it might not even have to do with what I'm going to ask you. But I know for the new candidates, when I attended the orientation at the police department, I questioned whether that capital asset policy that you implemented in 2006 was ever used. And Mr. Carmichael said no, and I'd like to know why. And is this in conjunction with it? Because that's, that policy specifically says that anything you purchase, up to $5,000, has to be inventoried and has to have a serial number. So you might want to look where some of your losses are there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Bringing it back to council. I just wanted to make a comment in general. We're talking about probably the biggest change here is being the purchasing limit. And I just think about all the different kinds of emergencies that can possibly occur in this city and think about the authority for that. I, I happen to agree with Councilmember Stone on this. $50,000 is reasonable and maybe we should think about some kind of a CPI. And I appreciate the particular cities that were chosen for comparison because you went a little larger and you went a little more cash-strapped than even we are, so, and smaller. So, and they were considerably more. So I think we recognize that. And we actually have a larger one for our executive director and CCAG also. So it makes a certain amount of sense to go with at least $50,000, and maybe we could think about that CPI issue for the future. Okay. Other council members? Councilwoman DeGruy?
I don't know if I did ask this. When you make these purchases, do you make some sort of a record?
Yes, we do. We use purchase orders. There's a number of different mechanisms that we use to quantify.
They're stored in a place we can find them and all that good stuff.
Yes, yes. And just to clarify about the CPI, so if council was interested in having that be added to the policy, we could do that. And basically just add that it'd be indexed to the Consumer Price Index of a certain one, so a sentence or a section we could be added, if that was your, your pleasure. I was ending, or trying to be a little more conservative in terms of, am I being corrected?
The city attorney has something to add.
My seat to the right, okay. Clarify for me, thank you.
Well, what we could do is we could amend the resolution. You don't need to adopt it tonight and bring it back when we actually adopt the ordinance because the ordinance will come back to you at another meeting. We could bring it back, the ordinance as well as a revised resolution.
Okay, great. Any other question?
No, do we need a motion?
Do we need to amend the emotion then?
No, no, you need, you just need a motion to introduce the ordinance and waive the first reading.
Okay. Just so everybody's clear, even though the questioner left the room, could, do we itemize and, I mean, my goodness, yes?
Do we even have to ask that?
I believe it's items over $5,000. It's equipment that we buy is inventoried and cataloged. I don't know if she had an interaction with Stephen Carmichael, but I can't imagine that.
Inventory at the hospital is much more detailed. It's a fascinating thing. Okay. Mayor Protem?
I just want to say that I agree with what's been said. It's been 14 years since there's been any rate adjustment, and it's very appropriate amount that you're asking for, and I'm more than happy to make a motion.
Go for it.
Go for it, yes.
I move that the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica repealing Chapter Four Purchasing System of Title III Finance of the Pacifica Municipal Code," be read by Title only and that further reading be waived. Two, do you want me to go ahead?
No.
We have to do one at a time.
So just number one.
I'll second.
Okay. Councilmember O'Neil?
Is this, are you adding a CPI or is this where?
No, no, that one's back.
Just to introduce the ordinance, which.
Please vote. And that passes five to zero.
Now you do the second one.
Okay, I'll go ahead. Move to adopt the resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council."
Actually, we're not going to adopt that tonight. We're going to bring that back to you. So there's no further action on this item.
So we only needed the first one. Great.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. And we're going to adjourn our regular meeting of the city council, and we're going to adjourn to a joint city council successor agency meeting. Call, roll call, please, or call, I've called it to order, roll call, please. Don't move.
Chair Nyheart?
Present.
Vice Chair Irvin?
Present.
Board Member DeGruy?
Trying to be present.
Board Member Stone?
Here.
Board Member O'Neil?
Here.
Okay. We have one item on the agenda tonight, it's a consent item, and it's related to the housing authority and the redevelopment agency. We needed to do this related to the county. I'm sure you've read your staff report. Do I have a motion?
Move of approval?
Councilmember O'Neil?
I'll second it, but I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Okay, in reading the staff report, I see that basically the only assets in the redevelopment agency are the two loans, correct?
That's correct.
Now, when I first got on the council, I remember meeting with Steve Rhodes at that point, and the financing was like really bizarre, where the City of Pacifica was like a guarantor of the loan, if I remember correctly.
Of a separate loan.
Of a separate loan. Where's, is, are one of these the separate loan?
No, these are two other loans that the city held that now will go to the county's housing authority to hold with your action tonight. What you're describing is this interesting arrangement that was approved in, I believe, 2000, where the city guaranteed a loan to HFA, which is the California Housing Financing Authority, for the Ocean View Apartments. And so we guaranteed a loan that then the national church residences took advantage of. They have to repay us, but their repayment, again, it's very complicated, their repayment to us is a 30-year repayment. Our loan, repayment of the loan is a 10-year repayment. So it is related to this, but it's separate because it's not an asset that the housing authority is taking over.
Okay. Okay, so we're still going to be stuck with that loan, correct?
I'm in the process of working with staff to potentially get it to be forgiven as part of a purchase.
Isn't that a city council issue as opposed to a redevelopment?
It is, thank you for that.
Thank you. That issue should. That issue should be discussed and public agendized in a city council meeting.
If I could just clarify what, what the action.
This is the successor agency to the redevelopment agency only.
Correct. And let me just quickly clarify that the action that the council is taking tonight is really just confirming an action that you took back in 2012.
That's right.
Which was to decline, to take over these assets. And so by, by the action in 2012, you asked the county to become the housing authority on behalf of the redevelopment agency essentially. And what you're doing tonight is just confirming that.
Okay. I second, I think I seconded.
You did second it. So any other discussion? Please vote. And that passes forward to nothing. And thank you all for coming. I appreciate it tonight.